Please stand and join the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the states of the land of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegraded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have any public comment? No, okay. I'm trying to be honest, hold on.
Appreciate it. Jacob Benson here, county councillor. I would ask that the board amend the agenda to move the executive session that I have scheduled at the end of the day, just move it towards under my administrative time at 9:30.
Okay, so moved.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, move the executive session from scheduled time to the 9:30 administrative session. I'm in favor.
Hi. Thank you.
Good call.
Public comment?
Okay. Well, we'll start off, I guess, Tuesday morning. I attended the 2026 campaign kickoff for Conza United Way at the Shamrock Enzo, Bill Snyder Family Stadium. Great turnout for the event. There's a lot of people from the community, community partners, individuals as well. It's good to hear what Conza United Way is working on. Look forward to kicking off our spring campaign this year. So that's going to be fun. And yeah, went very, very well. Also, Tuesday afternoon was the monthly board of directors meeting for Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. I had some discussion or approval of the minutes from the July 15th meeting. Didn't meet last month because it fell in that same timeframe. Everybody was working their way over to Ireland. Personally, I don't know how that looked out. Financials through August 31st, membership accounts. And then discussion items included the Metal, excuse me, Metal Arc project, federal issues. They sent a delegation with the metal team. That's the chambers from Manhattan, Foria, Topeka. And I keep wanting to say Lebanon, but it's more, yeah. To Washington DC to discuss some things with our legislators. So in the upcoming board retreat, which is in Kansas City in October, some other board members made some comments. Heard some reports from chamber staff on programs and events still working on. Lots going on this time of the year. Wednesday, we had our other large lunch potluck out at Florence. I didn't realize it's a handful of us that had a birthday this week. So we had a lot of food and a lot of fun and nobody felt like working in the afternoon apparently. So yeah, that works out. So Wednesday afternoon, I attended the September policy meeting with Flynn Hills Metropolitan Planning Organization. Agenda items included some opening and welcome and remarks by myself. No public comment, although there were some members of the public present. MPO financial update. I followed by some staff updates from the MPO as well as KDOT. Action items included tabling the approval of July meeting minutes. There was a couple of fill-ins. The secondary people, not the regular people that were there, didn't go through the minutes. So I figured we'll just do that in October. Let's see, approval of the 2026-2029 transportation improvement plan. Once it comes out of draft form, of course, we voted on it yesterday. So we'll take a little bit of time. There'll be some presentations given on what that is and update. And I'm sure Jared will come in and update us on that. Had an executive session on personnel and discussed a presentation from the EverGee fleet team. Apparently EverGee's got an EV program where you get discounts and all kinds of other cool stuff. Moving to EV, they're trying to move it over to the public sector. So may have a presentation on that just to see what it's about. You know, necessarily have to do it or anything, but just to compare and contrast, I guess. I think that was pretty much it for that. Wednesday evening, I met with a group of concerned citizens to discuss some county and area related issues and frustrations. Honestly, most of them weren't really county related, but several were. Went through and discussed them in detail. Everything ended on a positive note. There was a little back and forth, but you know how that goes. Mayhem and ended up having a follow-up session. I don't know if you checked out the new Chinese buffet. Remodeled Chinese buffet out on the west side of town, all kinds of new stuff. I believe frog legs.
Ew.
They were really good last night. Okay. Anyway, moving on. Thursday morning, I guess this morning, I attended the September policy breakfast at the DoubleTree by Hilton, sponsored by the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. Guest speakers included Shannon Goodman from the Potawatomi County Economic Development Corporation. Ooh, that's awful. And Chad Kinsley, Potawatomi County Administrator. Discuss plot things going on in Potawatomi County. And I'll also say thanks to all those entities that sponsored this month's events. So here I am. That's all I got.
Okay, I'm going to kind of ad lib this. I didn't get anything written down, but I'm pretty much over. Monday, after our meeting here, we had a lot more meeting in Ogden. Very many community people there. We had a good meeting. It was long. We went over budget and budget requests. There was a report on a group that's going, that's working with the police department. A consumer group on the road closings that are happening on the weekends. And as you know, so they gave a discussion and wanted to continue in the group to discuss changes because the business people down there weren't really happy with what they come up with. So they wanted to continue working on it.
Aren't all the roads down there basically closed anyway, construction? I mean, they've been hammering them pretty hard for the last six years.
It's a lot of it, but it's the barriers that they put up. Yeah, flashing light or the lights that they have to use a police car to keep the roads closed. And it's keeping, it's making people nervous about these problems. Business people.
I can see that.
Yeah, they say, you know, there's an incident, yeah, it's closed the roads. That's what, that's what the group is saying, the business people. So hopefully they'll come to consensus and get it figured out.
Was Dennis, was Dennis there in Scotland?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was the only mission.
Okay.
And then Wednesday, so I had a lot of different personal appointments. But Wednesday I was downtown and I stopped into our building over there and checked out the windows. My goodness, my offices look great.
Mine's boarded up right now. We're just told to just leave it, but I won't.
So when I walked on the sidewalk, there was a great big gaping hole where those windows were. And the people, instructors, workers were in there eating lunch.
Great sauce. I was in there last night. It's like you don't even need lights.
No, that's wonderful. Yeah, my office where that bookshelf was, it was covering up a window. And they took that wall out and there's like three big windows in there.
Triple the alleyway, yay!
That's a great view.
Panels and, yeah.
Well, maybe they put another mirror.
Well, if you time it out right, maybe you can go back there when Manhattan Brewery's doing some of their patio bins. You just open up the window and hang out.
After window for you, did he?
Yeah. And you know, the consumption thing ends at the alleyway over there. Maybe you could just have a runner and it'll work out.
My cape and beard.
Yeah.
Because the windows, it's amazing. It's going to make a huge difference.
I can't wait. Those nice, cool fall and spring mornings if we just need to open the windows. And not have to worry about falling out.
It's great. It was great. I was really excited. I went upstairs and said hi to the county councillors. And they were getting ready to interview. It's not an issue. Then this morning, I went to the policy breakfast at DoubleTree. Did the economic development and their county, their commissioner administrator was there talking about some of the same issues that we deal with. But economic development, you know, it's still with housing. They talked about housing and, you know, $50,000 a year. You're making $50,000, you can still afford, you know, $300,000 house. It means a difference.
Here's the thing with that. They make it sound like that you're just spending all your money on housing.
Yeah.
When you still have other bills.
You've got taxes on.
Exactly.
To start.
Probably have the car payment, taxes, utilities. If you're young, you probably have childcare needs. You probably have credit card debt, student loan debt. All that figures into that $50,000. Everybody ever talks, they were saying $1600.
$1600. $50,000. That's your average salary. So I don't know what the answer is going to be. Anyway, that's about it for me.
Well, Monday is, having since the board meeting, the jail population keeps going down. Weekend they had a 170. And we discussed why, you know, why are things going up so high over the last few years? And they said, they said 80% of people in there are awaiting trial. And Barry said, there's fewer attorneys, not from the county side, but there's so few. Fewer attorneys handle cases and also they're down to one court and three judges. I guess one left, a couple of years ago, kept me in the field. One just left recently. Between all that, it slows down the number of cases they can handle. Then as I said, also they're hanging the work. This man with the resolution, but they keep meeting and we had a long discussion about this. About what they're doing here. I think there's disagreement all over them, but our speed is, they need to change this. And then the afternoon, that was the VHS and the architect reviewed the latest cost numbers from the EM fire remodel. Sir, it's supposed to be coming to us for Monday. Wednesday morning was the juvenile detention meeting. It was our turn to host it here. I held it in the training room in the EMS building. We're working, one of the main things was there's new interlocal agreement for the 15 counties. The last one's in 1992. Bated.
Those juvenile, now.
Yeah. But again, they gave us, and I gave a copy to, handed out to all of us. Each of us could have our county council review next month, the review and see if there's any changes. And then we'll have to come back to this for. Then after the meeting, gave the tour and David Adams came to help, gave the tour of the facility. Which I had to show off our building and lots of positive comments. Can't talk about the fact that we moved down, was it outside? Somebody said, what was that? The ambulance building over there? Oh, and I said, it looks worse inside. But oh, yeah. So they all were impressed. They had a lot of questions that I think is going over some stuff. What they did and they were saying, why do we do this? Why do you, you know? And one of the things I didn't know, the recliners in their day room are special made for fire departments and ambulance, because when they get a call, they all, they don't fold up, they jump out of it. And so these are heavy duty, so they can stand up for that. I didn't know that part of the interview. I learned something too. And then later we had the interview in the county councillor's office. Then later had a meeting with Jim Kinnan and Perry Watson, the MATC. Discussed a number of things about what they're doing and future program. They got a lot of, they're just doing great things, but they're also looking for some property to expand their life and program. And so we'd left it, different option, you know, trying to come up with options. But they, right now they have a piece of space up on the keys. And so at the meeting, they're stopping, talking Mike Bolger, you know, about missing these properties. See if they're going to get together and see if there's anything that we can, you know, feed in those blood areas of all the things. But Mike wasn't sure what they, you know, I had told him, get together, but I wondered if Mike, if they were coming. This, and then we kind of discussed a lot of stuff just about county, except for general flight. So I think it's him and then his mission this morning is the policy breakfast.
Now, but if you want to take, if you definitely feel a lot of things on it, it's whatever the number wants to do.
Right, yeah.
Nobody, yeah, 15 minutes for a lot of it was a good, good idea.
I'd say, oh, James.
Now, good.
Big pass.
I passed it.
Yeah, I got it over the side and clicked it.
Oh, there we go.
You should be able to smell it again.
Page 53. Got a lot of this this year.
And this one's different than the old one. Building stuff. I used to let go on the left-hand side.
I finished my, it's my apartment.
Yeah. They were getting right.
Yeah, I'm just, are you going to take it right?
Lot of business.
She's going to the air system and work some, even. So that shouldn't. I said, you're not, you're open and they end up working on your computer the whole time. So you're going to be.
All right.
Go longer than two minutes.
Yes, I know. Time's up.
Amy Mangas, Register Deeds. And I am here with a brief summary of our revenue figures through September 12th at 3 o'clock with year-to-date information for 2024. We are about 150 documents ahead of this time last year, generating an extra about 60 million borrowed, which then reflects in increased fees collected in our various tech funds and for the heritage trust and coffee fees from researchers, et cetera. Our plats are right in line with last year, one more than last year, a few less lots. It's still mostly replats or, you know, tracked platted into a single lot. We had a very slow start this year, but we're picking up steam. And it'll kind of be interesting to see how the year continues with interest rates, you know, maybe going down. And people looking at refinancing if they go low enough. So we might have a busier end of year. We continue to cross-train employees. Joe attended the Register Deeds seminar in Wichita, June 2nd through the 6th. The hot topic this year was Ron Notaries. There's been a lot of back and forth on that and just how they're handled. So I am speaking to the Randolph Senior Center on September 22nd. So I guess that's this Monday regarding our office and property fraud alert and how they can sign up and what it does for them. I'm continuing to work with the city on the subdivision plat content manual. We meet bi-weekly on Thursdays. Lots of stuff to go through. I obviously only see what I see on my end. So I didn't realize all of the things and steps that are involved to get the plat to our office in the first place. And then I continue to track the daily revenue loss due to the changes in the filing fees. And the minimum loss to date is 561,275. And I say minimum because joint mortgages or any mortgages where I'm not sure of the amount, those have been excluded. So.
Significant.
And that's all I have. Any question?
I suppose I can lose more revenue than the decent general.
Yes. Well, during budget discussions, I think, what was it, like a million seven? We were short the year before and I think about a million five is what we would have brought in, you know, based on that. So. But thank you.
First item, I need a motion to approve the 2021 management representation letter from James Gordon and Associates CPA.
Well, I would make a motion to approve the 2024 management representations letter with James Gordon and Associates CPA.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to approve the 2024 management representation letter with James Gordon Associates CPA. All in favor? All briefly signed.
Make a motion to approve the CIP project activations listed above totaling $2,476,794.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the CIP project activations listed totaling $2,476,794. All in favor?
Chair, please sign.
Shoot. Yeah. Keep going.
Creative for yourself. Okay, sounds good.
I'll try to get you up in those way.
No problem.
Get them.
Next commissioners, the motion to approve resolution number 25 GAAP. So resolution can be made.
That's a lot. I'll move to approve resolution number 091825, a resolution exempting Riley County, Kansas from the provisions of KSA 75-112A with another A in parentheses next to it. 25 GAAP resolution.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution 091825. Resolution exempting Riley County from the provisions of KSA 751120AA. The 25 GAAP waiver resolution. All in favor?
All briefly signed.
She just didn't make it hard on you. She made it hard on all of us.
Next commissioner, the motion approved Riley County District Court 2026 annual budget to be submitted to the Office of Judicial Administration.
Go ahead, make a motion to approve the Riley County District Court 2026 annual budget to be submitted to the Office of Judicial Administration.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve Riley County District Court 2026 annual budget to be submitted to the Office of Judicial Administration. All in favor?
Chair, please sign. Next commissioners, I have the Riley County Board of Commissioners' employee action forms. Rick Thomas, Customer Service rep Juan, and the Treasurer Department, Secretary. County Executive, 756125. Based on just some good discussions I had with Mr. Cooper, I, he suggests we do motions on these from now on. What if I can get a motion on those?
Why would I make a motion to approve the request of employee action form?
Well, we have an official motion in the agenda moving forward. I mean, I know you probably couldn't do this to us.
It's possible.
Um, yeah.
There is one in there.
Is there one in there?
Yep.
Okay, good. I didn't know. I didn't know if it was, yeah, that's been, been saying that. So you get a motion on that?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the requested employee action forms. All in favor?
Aye.
All briefly signed. Commissioner, need a motion to approve payroll accounts payable.
Make a motion to approve accounts of payroll on accounts payable.
Um, acceptable.
Been moved and seconded to approve accounts payable and payroll. All in favor?
I wrote the problems here. I have.
All briefly signed. Any change in the minutes, commissioners?
I did not have any, no.
Motion.
Should go ahead. I'm sorry. Are you, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written from the September 15th meeting of the Riley County Commission.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes from the September 15th meeting as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, I've been in the gun's luck.
I'll just get it all.
I've been in the gun's luck.
Good.
Good.
Any kind of special express conference?
Yes.
That forgot. Actually, I had a second, 9:30, I think that first, I believe. Yes, for 10 minutes, correct?
Yeah, that's different. This is, I need to say this. Oh, you see that? This is for the second session. How long? 10 minutes. They, we got to like 9:30. Yeah. So. Yes. Uh, other head movement in the county commissioners, including Chairman McKinley, Vice Chair Bokeen Commissioner Ford, Jacob Hansen, County Counselor Darren Hobbs, Planning Compliance Specialist. Recession to executive session pursuant to the attorney client consultation exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act regarding confidential legal advice on pending litigation. And the open meetings resume in the county commission chamber at nine forty AM.
I would second that.
Then moved in second to the county commission, recess in the executive session, the reasons previously stated under the attorney client consultation exception with Kansas Open Meeting Act. All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioners, meaning this.
Okay, thank you. I've moved in the board of county commissioners come out of executive session.
I would second that.
Been moved in second for the board of county commissioners come out of executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Also move the record reflect action should be taken consistent with the consensus reached in executive session.
I would second that.
Been moved in second, record reflect action should be taken consistent with the consensus reached in executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Still got 10 minutes. It might have been time.
I don't have anything specifically prepared. Uh, if you'd like, I can walk through a couple of the projects that we've been dealing with. As noted earlier, uh, we had our interview, uh, uh, yesterday. Uh, I think really it went well. Um, you know, we're going to still kind of see what else is out there and what other options there may be, but things are, are looking good. Um. Again, as far as specific projects go, uh, there isn't anything, um, I would say incredibly pressing that you all aren't already aware of. So unless you guys have any specific questions on where things sit, uh, you know, I'm always happy to provide an update on that. But again, things are progressing as they should. No, no, uh, surprises, um, just plenty of contracts, so.
Aha.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
For my desk, do you have a date on when you're going to move offices?
Uh, no, no, no dates yet that I'm aware of. Um, I know we're going to be pretty much last, uh, as far as, as that goes, um. Yeah, it should, it should be relatively soon, but, um, we haven't got any updates yet from John. I know he'll give us a heads up as soon as he has an idea. I think that there were some issues just, um, with either getting certain equipment or whichever. I'm probably butchering it and John will tell me, I'm sure in an email, but, uh, um, you know, we'll, we'll, he'll let us know. Is it just the?
You're the last one.
Yeah, I think it just went the way things kind of worked out. Um, it just made the most sense to leave us last and, and so that way everybody else is where they should be. And then we can go into the kind of vacant spot.
It's just two windows in the back offices there, right?
Uh, no, we got the two windows in the back and then we got a window in the conference room and then a window in the filing room too. So here we have a couple more.
I see. Yeah, I was just trying to remember. I guess I need to stop and then say below something.
Yep. We're welcome to.
Okay, that was all. I'm just.
Yeah, this is yesterday when I went in, like she said, walked up and there was this big hole in the wall where your windows, you see?
Yeah, Rich sent me a picture.
But also I went into my room. I could see off the windows. View isn't great, but yeah, I could see there's light coming through the windows.
John, you got a better view of people and things going on?
I do. I enjoy every minute of it too.
Next commissioner.
So let's make that a list.
John, we'll have to turn your desk towards you looking out the window rather than the hallway.
That's a thought or.
Or sign your lines.
Yeah, I have to think about that. Or put it on the. Or do it on the west. Put it facing the west there where you. Not on this. Yeah, they didn't do that well. They could have said the EPO yesterday. We didn't have any motion. So recorded up. I've got one.
It sticks after so long.
Six years of blooming.
Well, that's it. Human nature's in an extent. Because.
Yeah.
Where the informal.
They will not put it there until the commission move them there. Interesting. Other clients want some. And we only went there for anything like that.
Different berry and.
That's what I'm saying. That's pretty interesting. One, one, one years, which hasn't been over here. Went a while.
You can figure out why they're cutting it.
See how it is.
I have, I was thinking maybe there was a stairway and the stairways down. Ask them that. Yeah.
I didn't know this yesterday. patio. You know, they're using, they're using that a lot for their, for their workspace.
Well, on the third floor, if you go down through the block thing. Pat your face and that way that would go like this umbrella tip.
I like the one on the fourth floor. They go way out there. You can see all the way down to Jeffrey.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what coming out of Riley. Twenty four. Week from Saturday, you see Jeff. Straight line. Oh, that was bad this morning. It was raining so. I was, I, I mean, I was sort of, I was just on the highway and not in, and I had, I was going for, had to swim in Florida to keep. All the way out and then started down Anderson.
I was hearing that six thirty yesterday morning. I went back to the break and grabbed a Gatorade and looked outside the wind and it was swirling around. I was like, holy cow.
Yeah, you know, I looked at that when I asked. Well, it's one of the common letters. So thunderstorms, maybe ten or five or something like that. And then about seven.
Yeah.
They're going on the shower.
Why the weather's shaking now is that it's going to be somewhere, I think it's something between twenty fifteen winter, we got, which was, you know, and it's also like a major ice storm. Um, so the weather conditions are seeming to be very.
Major ice storm.
Oh, yeah. That was all right.
Yeah, and apparently it's supposed to leave more, more snow, more ice. I remember.
I remember going to Jerry's, only place that had batteries for flashlights.
Four, thirteen, twenty fourteen, high school.
Real bad.
Real bad. Was it seven?
We lost six trees. And so then, yeah, it's not going to sunburn something. We got chainsaws out there. People on the levels digging to.
The advantage that would keep.
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad I was at actual gas.
I got natural gas.
I don't see my whole house unless we got downstairs and sticks that up to wood burn stove. So I don't know.
Oh. Oh, yeah.
We sort of put it outside.
That's all my parents used for, as long as I can remember until they passed away.
Okay. Okay. Well.
Kitchen's not really great to be in without those suns. I can't even hear there. Sometimes we have breakfast outside. I'm getting a couple of five gallon buckets of pears. You are? Small pears.
Almost are sweet.
I got some ideas. I think I'm going to make some pear butter.
Elizabeth had a great pear tree from Nebraska and produced big sweet pear. She gave me some of them small. Yeah, they're a really big pear tree from Nebraska. There's a guy, that one has a pear tree that produced quite a bit. I stopped by one night and asked if I could pick them. They're just dropping on the ground. Think of the runner.
I told him. We have quite a few apple trees in my neighborhood. They're green things.
He, he is, yeah, I have a few of them. It's one very big tree. It take a little longer, don't think. Same to, including my pear tree. That's not a real big tree yet, but we've lost them early. We've got, and.
Okay, motion. Yeah, uh, make a motion to recess of the board of county commission being as the board of.
I would second that.
Been moved in second to recess as the board of county commissioners convenes the board elf. All in favor? Been moved and seconded, recesses, the Board of County Commissioners convene as the Board of Health, all in favor?
Aye.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Kaylin, WIC supervisor, I am here to present the license for our new space on Fort Riley. So just as a reminder, we have occupied space in IAC since August of twenty seventeen. At that time, an MOU was developed and signed, and then in twenty twenty one, it was determined that a permit from the US Army Corps of Engineers was required to allow WIC to remain in this space. Twenty twenty three, that license was drafted, and then we were notified this spring that there'd be a five thousand dollar cost associated with that. And that would be a minimum fee every five years. So our MOU with IAC does expire on December first, so we're going to need a license to stay on Fort Riley after that. An alternative license is through the Garrison Commander, which would be renewed annually, does not have a fee. But that does require WIC to move out of IAC. So with assistance from Commissioner Ford and discussions between IAC and Garrison, it was decided that WIC will move to building two ten, which is where the DRS office or end processing offices and utilize that Garrison Commander license, so that's attached. The license is effective December first, but we've been given the okay to go ahead and get in early and get it set up and have our soft opening on November twenty fourth. And then this license will be renewed annually at the approval of the Garrison Commander. Then there's no cost for drafting or use of the license, all utilities for our space are paid by the grantor. And just recommend signing the license between the US Army Garrison and WIC program.
The one question that kind of comes along is that the lease is revocable at will by the Garrison Commander. That, that is that a necessary thing, or does anybody give ten days notice or thirty days, and it looks like DRS wouldn't have to?
They didn't say anything about amount of notice that they would give for us to be out if they were to revoke that license, but the current Garrison Commander is very supportive of keeping us on.
Be a general commander too. But that changes every two years, so every two years, yeah, that's going to come in question and I that's going to be the general vision of leadership that comes back in. I'll work with Kelly Pasco and Ben Van Cleve and ahead of time and
Okay.
so when those changes happen, yeah, but they know what's going on, maybe that will less, a little bit.
How much time do they have on their terms?
Two years, oh. A year.
Another year.
Unlike, unlike the general commander, the Garrison can actually, I think, has that four year window.
So we thought we'd be able to get another year signed next year before they left. So. Yeah, yeah.
You know, I think probably what's going to make sense there for that is, is when you'll have a gap in there somewhere, I don't know if it's six months, a year or something, when that transition happens, we need to start talking to whoever that Garrison is.
Sure.
Then, in advance, and we'll work through civilian leadership there to, to do that.
Okay.
When it comes to negotiating, especially on, you know, you're, you're talking to the federal government here, negotiating bounds is not necessarily, and especially when you look at it kind of from their perspective, you know, they have a lot of facilities that they use the same template support, and so when you make small deviations to some, it creates a lot of inconsistency for them, so typically that's, that's the reason. You know, being a previous state attorney, I can understand this, same argument. So that's why, you know, we're kind of, kind of going to give, give. And as far as terms.
Well, isn't the same thing to apply at IAC, was there, was there terms for that?
The expiration was December first, twenty twenty five. But I think there was probably something in there, yeah, I just haven't read through it recently.
I'll keep that in the back of my head.
Okay.
I'll go through some change.
And Jennifer Miller, the Realty Specialist, has been incredibly helpful with the license and our, our work there, so. Yeah.
Pros and cons each way here.
Yeah, there is.
We're still for, that's the key. Well, I make a motion to sign licenses between the US Army Garrison for Riley and Women and Infants and Children here at Riley County.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded, signed lease, meaning US Army Garrison for Riley, then the WIC program, Riley County, all in favor? I'm back.
Thank you.
I made a motion to recess the Board of County Health and then convene as the Board of County Commission.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded, recess of County Board of Health and reconvene as the County Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, state football this weekend. It could be a good thing. I saw you, you know how ESPN does a forecast predictor? At K State five week, the five week winning sixty four percent. Get fired in your day home.
Ready, Dave, Mr.?
Good morning. Well, good morning. Couple of things I was going to touch base on today, let you guys know what's happening in the extension office, and to me, kind of the highlights happening right now. First and foremost is Megan Doherty, our FCS agent, I'm sure you all have known her. We're starting to get in appointment times, taking appointments for Medicare counseling coming out. Now, this is something that we have people come back year to year, we get some new people coming in, this one letters are going out, we're getting appointments set up. This is Megan's life from about October, November, that timeframe, and as someone's an extension, this is something a lot of FCS agents do across the state, and I think sometimes we forget the impact it has in our areas. So just a brief snippet off my topic point, did point out that enrollment runs from October fifteenth through December seventh, so that's the timeframe, she helps out these folks. And these are folks that even if they're already on Medicare, this is the time when they can see what changes need to be made. So I asked Megan to provide me some statistics, just to kind of give you an impact statement of what's been happening. During our last open enrollment period, she helped two hundred and sixty four people in the county that came to her for advice and expertise. And she's an officially trained chick counselor, so all the agents across the states go through the chick training to do this. So she had two hundred and sixty four people come in. Out of that, seventy three percent of the people who came to her had changes to make to save money on their upcoming Medicare season, Medicare drug plans. The really cool stat is with that two hundred and sixty four people, seventy three percent of them got changed. The total savings as a result of changes to those plans came to four hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars, six, or four hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars, and then some change, so. I always know she gets busy, but I forget to, it's almost a half million dollars and money saved from people coming in to see her, so. I appreciate all she works, all the work she does on that, and I do think it makes a real world impact, not just for those particular people, but then as you know, the ripple effect of funds, they still have in their pocket afterwards. The second thing I want to kind of, I joke with my staff, my job is to come here and brag about what they're doing. I don't know if you guys are very familiar with Brandy Bruno, she's, I imagine you've seen her around, she's not going to be one to brag about herself, not be one to really get up. She is always busy. So the second point I want to talk today is she is up and going on school enrichment. So we've been having tadpoles get delivered to the office, we've been having ants get delivered to the office. And her job is, in some instances, go out to do direct education, actually presenting the topics, like the other day she's doing bread in the bag, I think it was up at Riley, actually doing the, the bread teaching, the baking, all that. In some instances, it's the supplemental education. Rather than schools have to all have their supplies on hand, we're the supplier to get the things in the hands of the teacher, like the tadpoles, the ant farms, the chicken embryology, those type of things. So she does the direct ed along with the supplementary education. So in the, I put a really brief overview in your packet that kind of shows her pattern she sends out to teachers, and I realize that's really small, and so if you're curious, the QR code takes you to our website where you can actually get the readable form, but I tried to do our, our makers, try not to send them over too long of a document, so follow that QR code if you want to learn more about all of her different document or all the different programs she does. That kind of gives you an overview of the variety, most of them for grade school to middle school classes. Now, the bragging part on Brandy is I asked Brandy, I was like, Brandy, how many kids last year were impacted through school enrichment, either through direct education or supplementary education? In Riley County, what, obviously, all, all we do in Riley County? Two thousand one hundred kids were impacted by school enrichment. So, you know, like I said, I love to come here and brag, so these are two big things I'm a big fan of right now. Hopefully over two thousand kids will once again are getting started right now with our school enrichment programs throughout the year. And for Medicare, we should have around two hundred and fifty to three hundred folks coming to see us about Medicare to have a total savings of around close to half a million dollars. Hopefully, we can help out with that over the next few months, so. That's kind of two big things going on in the extension world, of course, new four eight year starts October first, that's up and running. Annual meetings coming up for our end thing, so I'm sure you'll get information about that soon, but the new year is starting and we are up and running.
Good deal.
Anything I can answer or questions or anything else I can do for you?
When Jared hears there's an answer there, does he call pest control?
I kind of joked about it, I was like, do we need to, do we need to order these in, or do we just need to start collecting them and leaving food out at night? Yeah, so. Awesome, and evidently, I was side note, but you know, these schools, when they're done, we always need a place to go for the frogs, so they've been going to local reptilian owners who use them as food bases, but if any of you guys want any frogs for the home, evidently they live six or seven years, so we got you taken care of.
I don't even want, Brandy.
How big are those frogs, right? They're not big. The tadpoles they get in, I mean, they're, they're tiny, tiny.
Yeah.
So they're, what do we call it, three toed or three clawed African frogs, they're not native, so there's nothing, you know, we're releasing. Well, they're fully grown, they're only about yay big, so they're pretty, they're pretty small.
Be good. That's funny, no, I'm just thinking, I've got a, I've, I've got a reptile setup, and I was fixing to sell, I was thinking maybe maybe try some frogs for a while.
I mean, we will have a supply.
Okay.
And I could come, I can find some research that they are guaranteed to reduce stress or something, so we can put them all in county offices or something, but just not.
Guess we got one person who doesn't like.
Thank you all, appreciate your support.
I don't think putting a puppy in every office, one, it'd be very expensive and two, it'd probably be very unproductive.
I always have fun sleeping on my desk, that would be plenty of work, and when I get stressed, I'd search for pets and then I go back to work.
Yeah, the, the.
A real self.
I guess if you were going, I found out the chicks last spring.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the, the pork chops did enjoy some eating chicks.
You have an actual real puppy?
It's, Richard's brought puppies in, I bought one. And but they fall asleep on my desk, they just kind of, they don't fall asleep.
Well, I'm going to bring my puppy in.
Well, makes sense, it is a budget finance office.
Oh, John.
I've been there long enough, I probably fall asleep too.
They're good dogs.
I mean, he's brought chicks in too, and we, I asked him to take them out. We all held it for a little bit.
What are you going to do with chicks? You can eat them, raise them to you.
Eggs. Eggs. And, and we did. I, with the price of eggs, that's probably a better idea. We're thinking so.
We're to keep chickens. It's true that it is buying.
Yeah. I've got a neighbor who's got a rooster over there, so.
There are a lot of mysteries.
You know, I agree upon, this is not a local agreement, it's a TV community, it's a project that's just.
So you might want to rent your life. Okay.
I'll hit the Steve Austin, it's something else.
We lowered the price this one. Said we'd be giving fifteen looks. And there was not, well, but that, arc in front, that's just.
Can't tell that from you.
Which says by the first. First level. There is a lower.
Yeah.
I guess those little frogs would eat insects or something, didn't they? I guess I know where to find those too.
So.
About the time I got bed years ago, like copperhead was walking down the driveway and walked like two foot from a copperhead.
That reminds me. Yesterday morning, before it started raining, as I was driving to work, I don't know if it was a fox, I don't know if it was a bobcat, but something ran right across me really, really fast and was of that size.
Where was that?
Out of Wildcat Creek. Just once. No, I don't. I had a ball python once, but I, yeah, I don't do any of this.
My frog, please, you're the only good snake, it's bad snake.
I kind of inherited, I kind of inherited her, so that's how it works. That was a long time ago. But I realized I still have the tank and the setup for it, just haven't done anything with it.
Because we can take it out and hang it, you know. Hang it on the carry level shoulders. It's messed with it.
Yeah, they will be.
They're very muscular, obviously, because they, you know.
Remember Jerry Cooper, the crazy linebacker head? He took two balls, went to the pros. Went to the pros, had enough iron element, then he tried to eat him. He had to get it with a kitchen knife in his kitchen as it was trying to strangle him.
He was an interesting dude. But safety here, he's not, he's not in real good shape now.
Her safety, but he was a hard hit.
I'd like to have him back.
We got one big guy. Forget his name.
And I called for service and had to go home.
At least you know we're here. Some people still don't know yet. Another name came up in the talk about crazy people that played for K-State, Mike Eckler.
Always run through the end.
I was back in the days where you could like kind of hit a little bit with your helmet and throw it into severe. I've seen anybody play special teams like that.
Wouldn't there freshman that lowered the boom? I mean, you got no contact in their zone game. We haven't seen anybody on a team hit like that. He not, you know, got the helmet too much. At least he had a fire there isn't, you don't see that much of anybody else out there.
They used to call ahead on her.
Is it raining?
Ready to run?
No, I'm just sweating. I was running through the campus, pretty much.
All right. Good morning, members of the county commission. Brian Pete with the Riley County Police Department. Just here to give just generic information. There's nothing significant, I think, to report that's out of the ordinary. As far as our monthly crime reports, we are up a little bit more in violence or in more of the part one related crimes, robberies, sexual assaults, things to that nature. But when we say up, we're looking at around one or two, which because of our numbers, that would mean like in some cases, a 20 or 50% increase. So, but we still are on track to be lower as far as crimes overall. It's lower than last year, especially definitely below the five-year average as we look at part one or part two crimes within Riley County. The, it's just also our national night out. We've, we're doing every, we're again trying to branch back out into all facets of the county, not just focusing on Manhattan proper. So our national night out, I believe it's October 7th, we're holding that in Ogden. And so, yeah, we'll, we'll have a good time out there. We want to invite, we're not able to have the inflatables, but we'll have games, touch a truck, all kinds of folks, all kinds of food, things to that effect. So as time goes on, we'll be doing a social media push to prove that out there. Wanted to also just give a basic response to, a few weeks ago, we had a swatting incident that happened at K-State. Folks calling up alleging that there was, I'm sorry.
Is that like a national thing? Does that happen on a handful of different campuses?
Yes, sir, it did. And, and so kudos to our dispatchers and to our officers who responded. When you have swatting incidents, swatting incidents are, they're basically fake reports. There's someone calling up to say there's an active shooter incident that's going on in one location. And that forces EMS, fire, law enforcement to just go as fast as they can, code three, which puts the first responders in danger, a danger, which puts the public in danger. And then when officers get out to arrive at the scene, everybody's on a heightened sense of awareness and people who are just knowing about doing their own thing. It's a, it's a shock to everyone. And there's a significant threat of danger when all these things are involved. So we did not, we had a very measured response. We were controlled. We utilized training to ensure that we didn't over respond because there were certain aspects of the call that did not necessarily make sense. So we had, we moved with a sense of urgency, but we also moved again, hey, this is, this could be a fake thing. So thank goodness it was. And we are working with federal law enforcement agencies to track down the individuals that did do that. We have promising leads on that.
What happens when you catch?
It will probably be a federal, well, we could look at charging locally, but it'll probably be especially since these two individuals looked at, as least we believe it's two, bless you. Did it in several different places. Well, it'll probably be a federal case.
Okay, good.
So why do they do this? Just to cause trouble? What, what, don't they, does anybody ever come to the scene and try to hurt people?
No, normally these are folks, it, it could be that the motivations could range from anything from just general chaos. In some cases, it just might be hackers. In other cases, it might be kids online who are mad that this, this person beat them at Call of War. It could be a series of different things. In this case, we think that it was just a coordinated effort of at least two individuals who just targeted specific major college, university campuses throughout the United States. So from those two, we will have a, the homelessness task force will be meeting again next week. We're looking at sequential intercept mapping from law enforcement or how folks who are homeless, what that, how is it that law enforcement comes to, to deal with them? And then based on that, we identify if any gaps in services and how we can get people help. But then there's also another sequential intercept map that has nothing to do with law enforcement and how folks who are, who are in need of resources, how that can go along from a crisis situation to stable housing. So the, the meeting is extended. RCPD is providing lunch. I think it's, it's Chipotle, I think we're doing. So, so we'll, we'll go through everything. And I think from there, we'll be reaching out, once we identify what if any gaps and resources are, we'll be reaching out to the businesses, then we'll be reaching out to Chamber of Commerce. Then we'll be engaging with the county and the city. Probably more so the city, but we also want to make sure we're engaging with the county to talk about what if anything, what those concerns are before we compile a final report, if you will. But we will make sure we're giving milestone reporting. The, man, just when you think that you're getting ahead. The Trinity Healthcare Plan that we had talked about for the inmates. Just last week or earlier this week, something came down from the federal government that we are, it looks like we're not going to be able to enroll people within the healthcare system when they're arrested. We still can do something when folks leave the jail that will help other exterior, or I'm sorry, external stakeholders, the hospitals, everyone else. When someone who is in need of those types of services, now they have actual healthcare. But as far as what, what we were hoping for, to minimize any medical costs within the jail, looks like that one may be fleeting. So more information to come, but that just happened.
It has the authority to do that?
Through the Affordable Care Act, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Because the program came from the Affordable Care Act, but somebody somewhere might have heard one of the presentations and said, we're paying too much. Now, how, where are we paying inmates at? And then like we're gonna shut that down and who knows? But we just got a letter from Trinity Healthcare saying that that's a limitation now. And then finally, just as the commission's already aware, we will be presenting to the law board next month regarding the jail. Our average daily population, we were at 124, I believe, point two for last month. But just as, as recent as last weekend, we were at 137. And, and then the day that we were presenting to the law board, we were at 134. So we want to come up with options, viable options on how we can work to reduce costs. And so that's something we'll be, we'll have in the works and we'll present that to the law board. And especially any, any reports, we will send that to the county prior to sending that to the law board.
We're working on any way of actually just getting the population now?
Yes, we, we have.
I'm aware of the issues behind it. I just.
Yes.
Okay.
We have the, there are.
That's the easiest way to reduce costs.
It, it, it most definitely is. It most definitely is. And, and just like even in some of the conversations, there, there are a lot of external things that are beyond our control. Like how many defense attorneys they have access to, how many mental health is, so, so those different types of things. But we, the law board did ask us for data regarding the average length of stay, if you will. But that can be misleading because the average length of stay could be somebody who's arrested for a DUI and they're gonna stay there for two or three days and then they're out. But then the issue.
Can break it down by instance.
Yes, we definitely.
Right? How long will they stand there if it's mental health issue, et cetera, et cetera? So, I mean.
Yes.
I know that takes some time to put together. I understand that, but.
Oh, yeah. No, 100%. We need data to make good decisions.
Yeah, I agree.
Other than that, I have no other information to, to relate to the, to the commission.
Thanks, Brian. Appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
Mentioned, yeah, John May, or instead of John. I'm not prepared.
What says it's frog? I think I hear him right, right there. Maybe that was Brian. Started finding someone was gonna pop out and then started back up again, huh?
I waited until it comes out, you know?
You wonder why you have all these openings?
He said.
Are your ears burning?
The game. The state, we had to use the AG's office for a lot of bill state type work. They had a review of the title. So I'm thinking, well, to be fair to them, their office, their insurance. Yeah, there's not many people, you know, so you have no problem. There's not, there's not, you know, it's many. So, you know, you don't have any. I mean, the cost is pretty, pretty insane. Especially with there are some of the starting things. It's like, you know, why am I getting the grades and start? 20, 60,000 a year. And I have 112,000. So that just doesn't seem right to me. A lot of folks have been properly. And that has been like, you know, front of things, you know. Maybe a big connect, so we go to school, we get to the grade. Kind of have to incentivize. Looks like your site is now out of. Move that trainer in.
What they do for teachers, they give you. Rebate or whatever. Forgive us, that student loans.
Well, and, you know, they were thinking to do with something, I would do exactly. There's a big deal with them. I mean, most veterinarians want to go to their rural area and work.
Now, that's a problem. The best students.
Ready for me or do you want me to wait until 10:30?
10:30. The longest minute.
All right, go ahead. Good morning, Evan McMillan, Public Works. I'm here today to propose a grant application to the Kansas Water Office for the Water Benefit Districts. I'm here today to propose a grant application to the Kansas Water Office for the Water Benefit Districts. Uh, you may recall last year around this time, we applied for the same grant to replace our manual read meters with cellular read meters. Uh, that new system will allow us to automatically read and update our monthly usages for the water. For our billing system as well as, uh, allow us to remote shut off for any kind of leak or non-payment. That extra time spent in the field can then be used for other maintenance projects to the other districts, so. Uh, as with all funding, this program is very competitive, but our utilities clerk, Keith Clark. Has put together what I believe to be a very competitive application, so we're pretty excited about it.
They did add some extra money to this.
A little bit, yeah, so we owe to the funding program, I believe so, yeah, so fingers crossed.
Excellent. Did you look at the ones that did get it last year and see what they did different to see if you can figure out what?
We reached out to the organizations and asked what they'd like to see in the applications. I think last year there were some just really big, like, you know, water treatment plants that needed a lot of funding that kind of had precedence, so. So if you all are comfortable with it, we'd like to apply again and keep our fingers crossed and get, get it this year.
I'll move to approve the affidavit for the Riley County Smart Water Meter System Project Proposal and Budget.
On the second.
We moved to second to approve the affidavit for Riley County Smart Water Meter System Project Proposal and Budget, all in favor?
Sheriff, please sign it.
Thank you.